Welcome to the Village of Bartlett. Happy New Year to everyone. Welcome to the Village of Bartlett Board Meeting for January 3, 2017. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaronz?
Here.
Cammer?
Here.
Carbonero?
Here.
Danny?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. We have a special, two invocations this evening. One will be given by Pastor Ed Weiss from Faith World Outreach Church. And then the chief has requested Reverend Tim Perry do an invocation as well. Reverend Tim Perry is the president of Nationwide Chaplain Services and has been providing excellence in first responder care throughout the nation. So we'll have two invocations. Pastor Weiss?
Well, praise God and Happy New Year, everybody. Hopefully, two invocations mean this is going to be one tremendous year for Bartlett.
Amen.
Yes. Congratulations to Chief Williams and our gratitude. Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus. We're mindful, Lord, of the service that these people are giving to our community that gather here tonight. Lord, for this board and all the decisions that they'll make, Lord, that will touch lives throughout our community. Lord, we pray the great blessing of God upon them. Lord, that they would have the wisdom like Solomon did to know how to rule the people, to do the right thing at the right time, and to lift up the right voice. So, Lord, we pray for a great spirit of unity, a great spirit of camaraderie as they work together in this coming year. We have great expectations about this year. We say it will be the best year ever for the city of Bartlett, and, Lord, we're grateful for their service. So bless these, the servants, Lord, and bless the people whom they serve, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Weiss. Reverend Perry?
Good evening. I wanted to thank you for having me here to be with you. I'll be brief. My good friend Kent Williams is hanging up his shield after 32 years. That makes my heart beat in so many ways, I can't even tell you. You see, we knew each other so well, most people say, "Hello, how are you?" We already jump to, "What happened?" We've known each other well and helped each other through many opportunities. He reminds me of this movie I once saw. It was called The Peaceful Warrior. A man took time in his life to help another man get through all the trials and tribulations, and when it was over, he helped him understand it was not the destination, but the journey that mattered. And so for Kent, in all of our lives, it is exactly that. It's his footprint in our lives that will never be the same. Kent's signature verses, Proverbs, Chapter 3. And in this, we have four pieces of instruction. Trust in the Lord; do not lean on your own understanding; think about Him always; and last, He will guide you. These are proverbs of Kent's life that he has used to guide himself through 32 years of amazing police work. All of us in our positions understand what it is to be a leader of self and other people. Kent was a leader and a chief to a police department in an amazing city, amazing board and leadership for 32 years. I am grateful that I can sleep on a pillow, a pillow that says, "You will sleep tonight because I'm on the clock." Kent Williams, you will live this life with honor, and I will be the beneficiary to receive that blessing, as will all of us. Please, we come from different faiths. I'd ask that you call upon your own faith, as I pray. Bow your heads and close your eyes. Surrender this day. Oh, Heavenly Father, what a lifetime you've given us, an amazing blessing through the hard times and the good times. I'm so thankful that a man not only serves in amazing ventures, but he builds a second place, a second world, to come up when it's time to go. Lord, I know the heartbeat of my brother is to keep on going, but now he has a next level that you've given him, and that's to teach, to care for officers all over the earth. Lord, I ask that you give him wisdom, amazing wisdom, courage and strength on top of what you've already given him. How grateful are we that you would send your son to die for our sins? How grateful are we we get to be with you one wonderful day? Bless this city, Lord. Luther Bartlett would have wanted it no other way. In your heavenly and perfect name, amen.
Thank you, Reverend Terry. Terry?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for the other evening. It was a scream, it was so much fun.
Next item we have this evening is our consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk on the consent agenda will be enacted in one motion. There'll be no additional discussion on the consent agenda. At this point, is there anything a board member would like to add to the consent agenda? I mean, now I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the bills list from January 3, 2017. And that is it.
So moved.
Second, moved by trustee Cammer. Second by trustee Carbonero. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next item we have is our minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the board and committee minutes from the December 20, 2016 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Danny, second by trustee Carbonero. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
The motion carries as well. No treasurer's report this evening, and there is a very important president's report, Kent Williams' proclamation. And I hear the crowd's going to get a little thinner after this. Proclamation recognizing veteran police chief Kent Williams, years of service to the Village of Bartlett. Whereas Kent Williams began his 31-year public safety career with the Village of Bartlett Police Department as an officer on February 5, 1985. Whereas Kent's leadership qualities were recognized immediately, he received the Irvin W. Warren Award for Excellence from the University of Illinois Police Training Institute. The award recipient best exemplifies today's concept of tomorrow's police officer. Whereas Kent soon began his steady climb up the department ranks with a promotion to sergeant in 1993, commander in 2002, and deputy chief in 2005. Kent was appointed the chief of police in 2011. Whereas Kent has served as a patrolman, a detective, defensive tactics instructor, field training officer, dare officer, NEPA's mobile field force member. Whereas Kent's nearly five years of tenure as chief brought great changes to the police department, Kent instituted such programs as an embedded psychologist, critical incident team, and a roundtable team. Whereas under Chief Williams' thoughtful, innovative leadership, the village saw a new concept of community policing utilizing technology and data-driven policing, the purchase of an incident command vehicle and an all-terrain vehicle. Whereas many of the programs Kent, Chief Williams grew and continued where the police department opened house, award-winning national night out, and continued elevated status in CLEA accreditation. Whereas many of the police department programs that Chief Williams guided and enhanced make this a safe and enjoyable community, they are a reflection of Kent's determination to always put the protection of Bartlett residents first, and the peace and the safety of our community foremost in his mission as chief of Bartlett Police Department. Now therefore, I, Kevin Wallace, president of the Village of Bartlett, Cook, DePage, and Kane Counties, offer our deep appreciation to Chief Kent Williams for his many years of exemplary service to the Village of Bartlett and our sincere farewell as he moves on to the next chapter in his life, dated this 3rd day of January, 2017.
Let's get comfortable. Here's what I've heard a lot the last couple of days. What are you going to say, chief? What are you going to say? And those who know me most know I've never prepared a speech in my life. I speak from the heart, and I probably should have prepared something. Emotional day. It's been a roller coaster ride. People say, "How's it feel?" I can tell you, most people in public service, they get hired, and about four years on the job, they start looking forward to that retirement date where they can collect a pension. "Jeez, I only got 25 years to go," or "I only got 20 years to go," and they look forward to that moment. I got to be honest with you, I was 20 when I was hired by the Village of Bartlett, and I've been dreading this day all along. This town is special. The people in this room are special. I tell people, it's not Brigadoon, but it is Bartlett, and it's a very special place, one that's been touched by God, and one that has created so many mentors and leaders that are examples to not only the region, not only to the Midwest, but to the nation and the world. There isn't a week that goes by that my phone doesn't ring saying, "What are you doing in Bartlett?" And those are from all 50 states and up through Canada and Europe. None of that happens without the leadership of the men and women on this board, who didn't get lucky. They demanded it, and the boards before them, and the mayors before them. This town expects the best, they demand the best, and I've always said, "You get the quality of police department you deserve." And this town has always deserved the best, and they have the best. And that doesn't just happen. That requires somebody who's courageous and ferocious at the helm, and we all know who she is. That would be Valerie. We know Valerie, and she's, everybody would describe her as courageous and ferocious at the helm, and she only. She was the Tea Party before anybody knew who they were. Dan Palmer was the chief for many years, and he'll tell you, "We've always been expected to do much more with less," and to do it as an example to others in government. And that's always been our challenge, and we've always done that as an example to others. So when the crisis hit, literally the day after I became chief, we were in good shape. We were in good shape. Most cities were in into layoff mode and trying to figure out how they were going to stay afloat, and we didn't miss a beat. We've always been cross-trained, we've always been well-trained, and we've always been an example to public service across this great United States. With that, I would like to invite my wife Andrea up, just for a second. This is a team sport. It always is. We know that. Those in leadership positions know it's a team sport, and everybody needs a safe place. And I've always described the men and women who I have been blessed to serve as fulcrums. Bartlett police officers are fulcrums. They are well-balanced. They're a pivotal point of balance between two opposite extremes, and they have to maintain that balance between what I have always referred to as the pain, the suffering, and the futility of the brokenness of mankind, and the meaning, the purpose, and the hope. And I've always demanded that about our staff. And it wasn't a very hard demand. They show, they wake up in the morning, providing that service, looking to serve with care and protect with confidence, and to touch the lives of others. Like no other police department on the planet Earth, and that might sound biased, but I actually have the luxury of working with many police departments across this country, the men and women of the Bartlett Police Department wake up on a daily basis, serving with care, protecting with confidence, delivering dignity to the absurdity of it all, and delivering order to the chaos in such a way that people feel whole, they feel cared for, and they feel protected. And not just those things, but it's the way they do that. And we call that the Bartlett Way, and most people in this room know what the Bartlett Way means, and this board has demanded the Bartlett Way, and Valerie has been the ringmaster of it for the 31, almost 32 years I've been here, and for the 35 years she's been here. She's truly been a pinnacle force in public service. I've always called her the lion tamer. She makes things very possible for all of us. She plays chess while most people play checkers, and she's been a tremendous mentor and dear guide of mine and for many others in the room. And in order to be a fulcrum, you have to maintain balance, and the only way you can maintain balance in this kind of lifestyle is through faith and family. And very honored to have Tim here this evening. He's been a spiritual mentor of mine for many years. He's met me where I've been at, and there's only one other person on the planet Earth who has always met me there, and that's this wonderful woman here, Andrea. The ultimate blessing is faith and family. And my children are here this evening, and their families are here, and I can tell you, it's what makes it all worthwhile, faith, family, and a purpose. And Bartlett has been a blessing to me. I never came to work. I didn't work a day in my life. This has been my passion, my purpose, and my vision, and I've dreaded this day for almost 32 years, and it's here, and I leave it in very good hands. Dan Palmer was a great mentor. Dan Maloney was a great mentor. And none of this would have happened without them and their faith in me. I grabbed the baton, and I am passing it on to Patrick, who will be next chief, and this place will not miss a step. And I'm so proud of that. They say a chief's greatest gift to the chief is being able to promote one of your own deputy chiefs, and if you can do that for one of them, you've done well. I was able to watch Joe Leonis, one of my deputy chiefs, become chief in Leekenshire, where he is saving the world up there and changing the culture very quickly, and then Patrick will take over here. So I got to launch both my right and left arm. And it is time to literally drop the mic, lean forward into God's hands, and see where that takes me, and I do that confidently because of the way Tim put it so well. It's all in his hands, it always has been. So with that being said, God bless Bartlett. God bless everybody in here. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for my cause. Thank you for my purpose, and thank you for fulfilling the dreams and making my family secure and safe. And none of that happens by accident. It does take a village, and boy, we've got the best one on the planet Earth. So God bless you all. Thank you very much.
If I can just say something while Kent is...
Absolutely.
...flesh. Having served under him for many years, I can honestly say, and there's very little the board can say with assurance. And one of the assurances for me was always that our residents were protected and that we had a dang good police department, and that all falls from you, Kent. And I want to thank you for all those years that you did that, and especially for the last few years as chief. You've set a great example, and I only hope that your shoes can be filled as they have in these past few years. Thank you very much.
I'd like to say one thing also. Thank you so much for your years of service, and also, I understand you have a birthday coming up, and happy birthday to you.
We'll talk to you in a little while. Thank you, chief. Next item we have this evening, tough act to follow. Is there a town hall portion of the meeting? So if anyone would like to address the board at this time, please step up to the mic. State your name and address, please, for Lorna's sake, for the record, and try to keep your comments to three minutes. I could read yours, actually. No.
Thank you. My name is Wayne Johnson. I live off of 244 Village Lane, Bartlett, Cornershicken Gerber. I currently am the membership director for the Bartlett Lions, and I'm the membership director for the Bartlett Fest Committee. I'm here on behalf of the Bartlett Fest Committee to ask for the village's help. The Bartlett Fest has been around a long time, and some of you in the room have been original members of the Bartlett Fest Committee, and I'm not sure the village citizens understand how the Bartlett Fest Committee works. I have to say first, thank you to the Village of Bartlett, the police department, the public works, the park district, everybody who helps the Bartlett Fest be successful, but in reality, it's the committee that makes the fest work.
This is the 4th of July Fest, right?
Yeah, 4th of July, sorry. 4th of July Bartlett Fest Committee. So I'm here to ask for help, volunteers to join us, to have a fun and create a great experience for the members of the community, the community itself. We serve the village. We provide entertainment during the 4th of July celebration, and this year it'll be, I think, four or five days. It's going to be a long one, because the 4th of July, I believe, is like on a Tuesday. But we can't have, we can't continue to have the fest the way we're structured. The original members of the Fest Committee, the 4th of July Celebration Committee have, most have since retired, and little has been known about the fest. People think the fest is run by the village, when in reality, it's run by volunteers. I'm a volunteer. Everybody on the fest are volunteers, and we need the village's help in promoting that fact to bring new members in. People came up to us and said, "Hey, there's no bingo." And I said, "Well, tough. I mean, why don't you help us help the community? If we had people, we could do things like bingo. Right now, we could barely run the fest. We don't have enough people. We're a third of what we should be." Now, this is a non-denomination. It has nothing to do with race or religion. It's just to serve the community, the people within the village, and have a great time to celebrate a great Independence Day. And so be together, just have fun. So we need you to help us create a great environment for the people of Bartlett. I've got a public, a press release here that all of you have. If you guys could find some way to help promote us, I'm going to start contacting groups. Right now, there's no bingo. There won't be, ever, because we just don't have enough people. So if we get people to come in to help us, we will create bingo and other things. We've got great plans, we've got great ideas, we just don't have the people. So I'm asking for citizens like me, who have real jobs, but to spend a little bit of time during the course of the year to plan a great event, and then spend a day or so helping us run the event. It's not a big deal, because it's fairly processed already. We already know what to do. It's just, we need to be there to run it, so we need people. So I'm here just to ask for everybody's help.
Wayne, do you have a ballpark, a number of people that you'd probably need to recruit?
Over 20 at least.
Over 20, okay.
Yeah, we are probably two-thirds of what we should be. So we do, I mean, just the beer tent alone, we need eight people.
And how often does the committee meet?
We meet the second Monday of every month in the community center, at 7:00. So if you'd like to go, please go and join us, or contact, we're on Facebook, we've got a website. You could send us information, your contact information. I'll contact you. We could talk about, you know, what you want to do at the Fest Committee. I could certainly help guide you. It's up to you. Certainly, we've got positions open throughout every level.
Thank you. Thank you for my attention.
Just a quick question to staff. How appropriate would it be, because it is, we have so many service organizations in Bartlett, to put something like this on the village website? Would that close...
I think absolutely. I took notes here. I think we should do that and get the information out to help you accomplish that any way we can. Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne. Anybody else like to address the board at this time?
Art Prashanik, 925 Auburn Lane, Bartlett, Illinois. Congratulations to Chief Williams. I see he's gone here. I hope he doesn't come back into this meeting, because at the beginning of the invocation, he had 32 years of service. President Wallace's speech had him down to 31. By the end of the night, he might be down to 10 and not have a pension on him. Mr. Johnson, I wasn't planning to speak on that, but he brought up a good point about the Bartlett 4th of July Festival. Everybody in Bartlett loves it. Everybody from outside Bartlett loves it. And the bingo tent, there were a lot of people who were disappointed in it this year. Mr. McCarthy here, him and several groups have run that for several years, and he tells me that they used to make $12,000 to $15,000, but it was a lot of hard work. And next year, before you give away any of the village money to some of these groups that came out for handouts earlier, why don't you suggest that they maybe get a group of people together for their cause and work the bingo tent? Instead of the taxpayers giving them $1,000 or $3,000, get a group of 10 people, work out a way where they can make money for that. Everybody will win with that. The real reason I came up here tonight is I wanted to talk about the smart meter presentation that Rich Frankie gave you guys last week, last meeting.
I'm sorry, Art, but could you speak up a little?
Sure. Mr. Frankie gave you a smart meter presentation, and I've known Mr. Frankie for years, and I know he's passionate about that. He said a lot of things that night that I hope made you perk up the question about whether smart meters is the right thing for Bartlett or not. I did have a conversation with him outside the room, and I'm not sure about all of his facts or not, but it almost seemed like ComEd, in the way to try and increase profits and reduce labor costs and that, has come up with a method that is best for their interests, but not maybe what's best for the public's interest, especially when it comes to the transmission of the data. Apparently, they use the cheapest way to do that and not the most safest. So if that's an area that the village could look at, whether or not you can stop that or change the method of transmission, that might be helpful. Like I said, I'm not an expert. I would suggest you guys sit down with him or bring in other people that know about that stuff and talk more. We saw what happened up in Flint, Michigan, when a government decided to go on the cheap. They ended up causing hundreds of million dollars of lawsuits and interrupted people's lives with health hazards. So I hope that, is that a done deal, by the way, smart meters, or is that still up for consideration?
No. It was on committee before.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Because, you know, if it's not too late, I hope that the village can at least take a second look at that.
Yeah, and he actually, we followed up with him after that meeting as well.
Okay.
The village did, and we didn't talk about alternative ways to do the transmission, so I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's possible or not.
Yeah.
And I don't know what other, I mean, Bartlett is behind, other villages have been doing this for years now.
Yeah.
And I don't know if there's data out there to support it or not, but...
We'll find out.
Very good. Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the board at this time?
Jennifer Rasmussen, 361 South Hickory. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to address the board again on the topic of backyard chickens, which is coming after this, I believe. Tonight's speech will be much shorter than the one in June, so no worries. I'd just like to say I'm happy to see that this issue is still moving forward. In the seven months since I last came before you, I've done more research. I learned that St. Charles has allowed chickens on residential properties for over 20 years with minimal restrictions and minimal problems, complaints. So, and as I'm sure you're aware, St. Charles is frequently voted as one of the top-rated communities to live in, in the state of Illinois. I've also come into contact with many more people who would love to see Bartlett follow the growing trend of backyard chicken keeping. My husband and I are constantly running into people. I can't even go get my hair cut without the person that's cutting my hair talking about this. So the topic is on the upswing. I think a move to allow chickens on residential lots in the village is not a step backward, but is a step forward. It's, you know, it would be a tremendous move in favor of progress. And last but not least, I want to thank Mr. Planchinsky for putting up with my emails. He's been patient with me. He's been really quick to respond. And I want to thank President Wallace and all of our trustees for being so patient with us at the last meeting and being so willing to listen. It really means... It really means a lot to me. So, in chick days, we're just a few months away. Just, just...
Thank you, Jennifer.
Hi, my name is Nancy Blondin. I am at 152 Sunflower Lane, fifteen-year Bartlett resident. I wanted to speak today about the proposed change for the ordinance for backyard chickens as well. I come from a rural upbringing, and my grandparents had a farm, so I was brought up knowing where my food came from. I think that's important for people to understand. People who have not been exposed to farming may not understand the connections between the parts of the food chain. And when there is that disconnect, the ease of purchasing food from grocery stores pushes individuals and small farmers to stop farming, and then production farming happens because of the increased demand. I am a veterinarian, and I have seen egg production farms, and I can tell you from firsthand experience that production farming is absolutely cruel to chickens. They're housed in very small enclosures, sometimes one square foot of cage. They're stressed and often diseased due to the crowded conditions. When they're too diseased or aren't producing, sometimes they're killed and sold for meat. I think that supporting people who want to raise their own chickens for eggs is really a good idea. It decreases the demand on egg production farming, so then with less demand, there will be less chickens that are kept in those horrific conditions. Egg production farms are smelly and dirty, but I can tell you from firsthand experience that a small coop with only a few hens is really not smelly or dirty. Of course, they still produce manure, but three or four hens that are kept in an outdoor enclosure really won't produce anywhere near the smell that most people attribute to chicken farms. I truly believe that chickens kept in small coops, like would be the case in the Village of Bartlett, would be an asset to being self-sufficient, as well as healthier for both the chickens and therefore the people raising the chickens for their eggs. Eggs from chickens who are healthy and not stressed are much healthier than eggs from stressed chickens. Diseases carried by chickens, of course, is a concern for a lot of people, as it would be for other pets kept in the household. A flock of chickens would be much more likely to carry disease than three or four chickens per lot, which is what I assume is being discussed, which would be spread throughout the village. So while it's a risk, that risk is actually really quite low for backyard chickens. The biggest thing that's usually argued is that salmonella spread through feces is always a concern, and of course, owners should know to wash their hands and the eggs prior to consumption. But growing up, my parents have a neighbor with chickens, and we regularly ate those eggs and visited the chickens, and we did not have any issues with simple hand-washing procedures. My husband and I are interested in applying for a permit to have backyard chickens, so I thank you for your time and consideration.
Anyone else like to address the board at this time? Hearing none, we will move on to the standing committee reports this evening. Our standing committee report is under Planning and Zoning. I believe we have some conflict of interest. Chairman Ranky, are you gonna recuse?
Yes, Mr. President. I'll be abstaining from discussing or voting on items one through six under my committee.
And therefore, I'm gonna be turning that committee over to Chairman...
Need to stay.
Hopkins.
President, I, I too must recuse myself on Planning and Zoning Committee this evening, items one through six. So I guess Saren and I'll go out and sit and lobby and...
Chairman Hopkins?
The cigar.
We have six items on our agenda tonight under Planning and Zoning. I'd first like to remove items A1 through six from the table that were on the table from the last meeting.
Move by, make a motion from trustee Hopkins to remove the items one through six from the table, seconded by trustee Camer. Please call the roll.
Trustee Erins?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
I'm, um...
Sorry. Hopkins?
Yes.
That item is back on the floor.
So first item is A1, an ordinance approving RLE Property Corporation annexation agreement. The petitioner is requesting the following: an approval of the annexation agreement, rezoning the north lot, 2.02 acres, a cell tower lot, and the residential B3, special use for motor home sales, automobile and truck mechanical and body repair and detail shop, automobile body shop, and a site plan review. This was reviewed by the Plan Commission on July 14th, 2016, and the Village Board Committee reviewed it on August 16th, 2016. So I will go ahead and make the motion. I motion to approve ordinance 2016-1, an ordinance approving and directing the execution of the annexation agreement between RLE Property Corporation and the Village of Bartlett. Twenty seventeen dash one.
Moved by trustee Hopkins, seconded by trustee Erins. Is there any discussion?
No. Can staff just give us a little background on this?
Thank you, trustee Hopkins. I will just, up on the screen, we are showing the area of the RLE property on the north side of Lake Street, and subject of the annexation is actually the 2.02 acres on the north end, labeled as parcel one. The southern 4.2 acres are, is, is in the village. And then, moving on, the site plan shows the existing buildings, which will remain, the two in the middle. The southern part of it will be detention area for the property to the west, as well as this property, and the north part will be some future storage area. And then we have a landscape plan. Generally, the two buildings will support the Toyota dealership for sales, right, for repairs, auto body work, and, and some storage for vehicles. And that's the sum and substance of it. From the owner's standpoint, the Village of Bartlett and the Village of Streamwood, as part of this deal, will benefit from a water interconnection. That is, the developer and owner will get his water from the south end. It will connect along the east side of his property up to the water tower in Streamwood, and will have a water interconnect between the two communities.
Any other discussion?
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Erins?
Yes.
President Wallace?
Yes.
Next item, A2, an ordinance...
The motion carries. The motion carries. I have to vote on these.
The next item, A2, an ordinance annexing the RLE Property Corporation's 2.05 acre parcel. The executive summary is the same as the first one, and it was also reviewed by the Plan Commission on July 14th, and by the Village Board Committee on August 16th. So I motion to approve ordinance 2017-2, an ordinance annexing the RLE Property Corporation's properties to the Village of Bartlett.
Move by trustee Hopkins, seconded by trustee Camer. Is there any discussion?
I know when we reviewed this back in twenty, or August 16th, is there any changes to this?
No.
With respect to that, there were a lot of back and forth on the intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Bartlett and Streamwood and the property owner relative to sharing in the cost of the extension of the water main. And the last item here was with respect to an easement that was needed on the Cadillac Ranch, or whatever they call themselves these days, property, the Hala Cart property.
Any other discussion?
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Carbonaro?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Erins?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
President Wallace?
Yes, that motion carries.
The next item, A3, an ordinance rezoning the 6.475 acre RLE property to B3, granting a special use permit and site plan approval for RLE Property Corporation. The executive summary is the same, so I will go ahead and make the motion. I motion to approve ordinance 2017-3, an ordinance rezoning the property from ER1 to B3, granting a special use permit for motor home sales, major repair including automobile and trucks, automobile and truck mechanical and body repair and detail shop, automobile body shop, storage of motor vehicles owned by the owner or its affiliates on the subject's property, and site plan approval for RLE Property Corporation. So moved.
Moved by trustee Carbonaro, actually moved by trustee Hopkins, seconded by trustee Carbonaro. Will the clerk, is there any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Hopkins?
Yes.
Erins?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
President Wallace?
Yes, that motion carries.
The next item is A4, a resolution approving intergovernmental agreements between the Village of Streamwood, RLE Property Corporation, and the Village of Bartlett. The executive summary is the same as the above items. So I will make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-4, a resolution approving of the intergovernmental agreement among the Village of Bartlett, the Village of Streamwood, and RLE Property Corporation. Second.
Moved by trustee Hopkins, seconded by trustee Erins. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Erins?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
President Wallace?
Yes, that motion carries.
The next item we have is A5, a resolution approving RLE Property Corporation's public improvement completion agreement. This is a picka for the development known as RLE Property. This serves as an agreement between the village and the owner and developer, RLE Property Corporation. This agreement has been reviewed and approved by our village attorney. I move the passage of Resolution 2017-5, a resolution authorizing the execution of a public improvement completion agreement between the Village of Bartlett and RLE Property Corporation for the development known as RLE Bartlett. Second.
Moved by trustee Hopkins, seconded by trustee Carbonaro. Is there any discussion?
Is this a typical picka, as we've seen in the past?
Yes. The only difference is the, we've got parts of the property in Streamwood, and, you know, there's complicated by that, but most of that's covered by the intergovernmental agreement.
Will Streamwood also make them?
No, because the, most of the public improvements on our property, the Streamwood issues are covered in large part by the intergovernmental agreement. They've got another piece that they're annexing to Streamwood that had to wait for this piece to fall, and I think that's coming up in a few weeks there. So they may have some other things and conditions of that ordinance that Streamwood approves of the zoning on that other piece.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Erins?
Yes.
President Wallace?
Yes, that motion carries.
Next item is A6, a resolution approving Alakart Entertainment LP easement agreement. The executive summary is the same as A1. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-6, a resolution approving of the temporary construction and permanent water main easement agreement between the Village of Bartlett and Alakart Entertainment Limited Partnership. Second.
Moved by trustee Hopkins, seconded by trustee Camer. Is there any discussion?
Do.
Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Carbonaro?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Erins?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
President Wallace?
Yes, that motion carries.
That's all we have under Planning and Zoning, and I just want to thank the petitioner for actually developing this property. I think it's driving up and down Lake Street, and I think I've said it in the past, kind of rundown, and hopefully it gets developed and it's successful. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll see this all develop as soon as the weather...
Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins, for stepping in there. And our next committee, standing committee report is the Building Committee for Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. There is nothing to report on the Building Committee.
Took the longest one that Erins and Ranky had all year. Next item we have this evening, and our standing committee report is the Finance and Golf Committee. Chairman Danny?
Mr. President, we have one item on the agenda. It really feels good to be able to talk again. The item we have on our agenda this evening is the Bartlett Hills HVAC replacement. And staff went out to bid the replacement of the Bartlett Hills HVAC system. Seven bids were opened and submitted on December 15th. The bids ranged from a high of ninety-six thousand dollars to a low of fifty-nine thousand four hundred seventy-four dollars. Jensen Plumbing and Heating Incorporated submitted the low bid at fifty-nine four seven four. The budget amount for the project was a hundred thousand dollars. Based on the bid results, we are recommending entering into an agreement with Jensen Plumbing and Heating Incorporated. Jensen Plumbing and Heating has done similar projects recently with surrounding municipalities. And with that, I move toward Bartlett Hills, the Bartlett Hills HVAC replacement project to Jensen Plumbing and Heating Incorporated.
And also, Ray, if you could add to that motion, the approval of that resolution.
Okay.
That's the resolution number seven?
Two thousand seventeen dash seven.
All right. With that, yeah, we'll add Resolution 2017, uh, seven, R. A resolution approving of the agreement between the Village of Bartlett and Jensen Plumbing and Heating Incorporated for the 2017 Bartlett Hills HVAC replacement project.
Second.
Moved by trustee Danny, seconded by trustee Hopkins. Is there any discussion?
Are we, are we sure about their numbers? I mean, they're so much cheaper.
I think we're pretty comfortable with them.
Okay. I'm not complaining, but it's a significant difference.
The second lowest bidder was only like five hundred dollars different, so it's a little comfort.
I was shocked also when I looked at those numbers.
Are all the, are all the units, the same make and model that were sent out to bid?
Correct.
Or...
They are.
... manufacturers?
Yes.
Yeah, the highest one was quite a bit higher than the fifth highest, so a big gap in between those last two. Any other discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Erins?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next item we have in standing committee reports this evening is under License and Ordinance Committee. Chairman Erins?
Well, thankfully, there are no agenda items under license and ordinance this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chairman Erins? Next item we have in our standing committee reports is a license, or Police and Health Committee. Chairman Carbonaro?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report this evening.
Chairman Carbonaro. Next item we have in standing committee reports is under the Public Works Committee. Chairman Camer?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one item under Public Works this evening. However, it's deferred until we return from executive session.
Thank you, Chairman Camer. Um, we'll move along to new business. Is there any new business?
Yeah, I, I have one thing. Uh, it's by understanding Dan also had a birthday this December, so happy birthday to you.
Do we have cake? Twinkies?
Trustee Danny says you brought it up. Maybe you should...
Y'all will take the cash.
Any other new business? Other than Happy New Years? Any questions for staff? Anyone? Anything going on? No? No? Next item on the agenda this evening is we have to adjourn this meeting so we can go into executive session to discuss the collective negotiation matters pursuant to section 2C2 of the Open Meetings Act. And then we will come back into this area and vote on that particular executive session. And then we'll adjourn the regular meeting, and then for you folks that are here for chickens and bees, we'll be establishing the committee, the whole meeting after that process. So we don't really predict the amount of time. It depends on how much the discussion goes into the executive session. Usually, Mr. Smith is very short-winded, so with that, I'll entertain our motion to adjourn our session here into executive session.
Second.
Moved by trustee Erin, seconded by trustee Hopkins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Erins?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Return to executive session. The motion to reopen our board meeting?
So moved. Second.
Moved by trustee Camer, seconded by trustee Danny. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Erins?
Yeah, here.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here, we are in order. Reconvening the board meeting to public works committee under Chairman Camer. Danny committee report?
Thank you, Mr. President. After our discussion at executive session, I would like to just move straight away into a resolution, a motion for a resolution 2017-08, a resolution approving of the agreement between the village of Bartlett and International Union of Operating Engineers Local 150 Public Employees Division for the period 5/1/2016 through 4/30/2019.
Second.
Moved by trustee Camer, seconded by trustee Danny. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Erins?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
That motion carries. I believe that's it for public works committee. Chairman Camer, thank you very much.
Yes.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn. We will be moving directly into the committee, the whole meeting for bees, discussing bees, chickens, and impervious services and the planning and zoning. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved. Second.
Moved by trustee Camer, seconded by trustee Carbonaro. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Ranky?
Here.
Erins?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
We are adjourned.[1484.73]